Welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting of Foxborough School Committee for March 7th, 2023. As with all our regular business meetings, this is being recorded and televised in the moment. For funsies, since the Super Bowl is over, I suggest you all go back and look at previous meetings, because that's just a hoot. And there we are. Our first item of business is different than it normally is. It's going to be with the Foxborough Board of Selectmen, and it's a vote on the unexpired term fulfillment for Foxborough's representative to Southeastern Regional District School Committee. And so that's a bit unorthodox. And with that, we will open that section of our meeting. And with any members of the Select Board would like to come forward and open your meeting, we are so grateful for your flexibility and your presence here tonight to make this very important matter move forward.
We have made us come.
Yep.
Well, she does that.
Four out of five here, too.
She does that.
All right, so as Brent just said, opening the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, March 7th, to make a joint appointment to the Regional School Committee.
Motion to open the Select Board meeting.
I'll second it. All right, and there's four out of the five members here in person. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now, the joint meeting is in session, and I'll say a few words. And if any fellow members of the Subcommittee would like to chime in, as ever, you are more than welcome, as you'll probably say it better than me. So, once we found out we had an opening for the Southeastern Regional School District's school committee rep, members of this board, in consultation with the Select Board, decided to set up a Subcommittee, because no one person should be deciding this. And since both boards have to jointly vote on this position, and it is of integral importance to the community of Foxborough to have our representative in place for the full term of that school committee, our Subcommittee, thankfully from Dr. Berdos's good offices, had a handful of interested parties because of a notice that Dr. Berdos had put out. And through various discussions therein, we were weaned down to two incredibly high-qualified candidates. Both of those candidates met with the full Subcommittee for quite some time, and we talked to them at length with formal questions, and then subsequent discussion, looks at references, and the like. And the candidate pool, as I said, was very, 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 very qualified. And yet, the Subcommittee did come out of that process with a unanimous recommendation. The unanimous recommendation was for Ms. Jen Souza, who is joining us here tonight. I believe the Select Board and school committee have a copy of her resume in their packets. And if Ms. Souza would like to come forward, and we would love to just have the opportunity to say hi, and perhaps any committee member on either board can, of course, ask questions of Ms. Souza, provide comments or whatever. And then, if there's any questions that Select Board members or school committee members have, or members of admin, for that matter, have about the process, I'm happy to handle those. But beyond that, welcome, Ms. Souza. Thank you for being here, and thank you for the inordinate amount of time you spent here to potentially take up a volunteer position representing our community. So with that, do any committee members have questions, comments, concerns? Well, then, I will stoke the fire and say a few things. As I've already said, now my third time, the candidate pool was deep and rich, but Ms. Souza frankly deeply, deeply impressed the Subcommittee with, and I'm using words from some of our Subcommittee members, with passion, demonstrated commitment to education, particularly vocational education, particularly vocational education at Southeastern, where Ms. Souza did serve as a faculty member, trailblazing faculty member for almost a decade and a half. And in that time at Southeastern, left her mark in many ways, from augmenting and extending the depth and breadth that math is taught. Taught. Is taught. Thanks, Doc. I knew Doc would be the first one to laugh there.
You were thinking math. You were thinking math, not English. So, it's okay. It's okay.
I speak good some days.
Speak math. Speak math now.
I speak nice some days. Well, anyway, where she piloted, and then I was ensconced in AP Math program, something that's not the norm in Volk Ed schools around the Commonwealth, or frankly, around the country. And that's not only admirable, it's necessary. And I'm grateful for your efforts in that regard. Ms. Souza also served in leadership positions, guiding them through Niasc, through guiding the math department, through their budgeting process, resource procurement, chairing committees that handle grants for Southeastern, and the math department in particular. And with heavy heart and a few tears, voluntarily left Southeastern just to broaden her horizons before looking on to school administration, which is something she hopes to dip into in the near future. While I personally cannot imagine this scenario, you are leading a family while a doctoral student, while a full-time teacher, while doing all the things. And all of that passion shown through, and the word that every single Subcommittee member mentioned with that passion, was also humility, and a demonstrated commitment to listening to others and being part of a team. So that's what we saw in you.
Thank you.
So now, I have a question.
I like when you ask questions.
Great. Great educational background. Thank you for volunteering to do this. The role of a school committee is different than that of an administrator and educator. Why a school committee?
I think that I have a good broad spectrum on the way that vocational education works. And so I think that part of the importance of the school committee is that everybody comes and looks at the schools through a different lens. And so that's why we have people from industry, that's why we have people who have never taught. But I do think there's some value in having somebody who's in education and is able to kind of see the other side of things. And so I think that I'll have a lot of value in there. I also, you know, do want to go into administration, and I think that it'd be nice to see how things work from the school committee lens, because I think in my career, that will make me a better administrator, too. And I think that just being able to see things through other people's eyes, and the way things work in some different realms is really important, just to be, you know, kind of well-rounded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great answer.
Yeah, good answer.
Certainly well-qualified, and we'd love to see someone new join onto a board of committee in town, so.
I'm excited.
Welcome aboard.
Any other questions?
I was just going to say, I appreciate your perspective on that. So I'm a former principal myself, and I kind of ran for the school committee, having grown up in this town for 40-plus years. But then I can give back, and I can use my educational expertise. So I really appreciate that lens on it, and it has such great value for us, I think, for our school committees that we serve on it as well, too, to bring the lens from the in-house, and having lived the life of it, too. But also from the administrative level. So thanks for doing that, stepping forward.
It's nice to get back to the town, too. I grew up in Market Street, right up the street. And so my husband and I settled here as adults, and I have a daughter at the Igo, two more that are coming up. And so it's nice to be able to kind of get back to the community, too, because they haven't been able to do a lot of things with the town. So I think this would be nice, kind of merge between the vocational school, which I really have a passion for, and serving the town. So I'm excited.
You got a great education here, and then you went to Bridgewater State. And that was probably your assistant principal, now that I think about it.
Probably.
From the...
I went to the high school in eighth grade. I actually moved to Sharon. I did high school in Sharon.
Yeah. Very good.
Nice. Well, piggybacking off of something Ms. Gibson had said, there's all too often that these board positions do go unfilled. And a lot of times, that's for honestly, a lack of knowledge. And the entire school committee, and I won't speak for the Board of Selectmen, but our Subcommittee as well, was deeply moved that a number of people had stepped forward. And it's a testament to our community, and the bent towards public service, and making sure that we're all lending a hand to the business of making sure that, in this case, kids in our town have the best education possible. So we're all incredibly grateful.
And with that, I'd like to make a motion that the school committee approve the appointment of Jen Souza to the Southeast Tech Regional School District School Committee.
I'd like to second that.
All in favor, committee?
Aye.
It's 500.
All right, great. Then part of, as our joint appointment, we have a motion as well and vote.
Motion to appoint Jennifer Souza as the Southeast Regional School District Committee Representative for a term to end November 1st, 2024.
I'll second it. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so with that, we're going to adjourn our meeting real quick.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second. All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Is that a record for Select Board?
Yeah.
All right. Ms. Souza, thank you so much. Congratulations. I know they're very much looking forward to seeing you on the 14th.
I'm excited. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Congratulations, and thank you so much. And Mr. Uden?
I have a pass. I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. I just wanted to say thank you as well for all your years of service.
Thank you.
To both Foxborough School Committee, Southeastern, and the town writ large.
We're blessed to have people in this town that deeply care about our kids, and their safety, and their education. That's a blessing I think we all enjoy in this town, in every aspect of the town's education.
That's deeply felt. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Continuing with the Foxborough School Committee regular public meeting. Next up is open public comment. Do we have anyone? Okay. No one here has signed up for open public comment, but we like to use this time to remind folks that you are, of course, welcome to these meetings for open public comment. It's less of a discussion, more of a time to just comment on things. In addition to that, we do have a community inbox that's available to anyone 24/7, and those messages do get to every member of the school committee, pretty much in real time. And we want to thank those folks, a handful of folks submitted to the open public comment in this last round. So moving forward from there, we'll look at approval of minutes for February 7th, 2023. Do any committee members have questions, comments, concerns, or edits for the February 27th, 2023 minutes?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the February 7th, 2023 meeting of the Foxborough School Committee.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Ladani. Thank you, Ms. Raymond. All in favor? Those are approved for publication and dissemination. 500. Thank you. That was a robust meeting. Thank you so much, Janet. Those are very good. Next are the Subcommittee for the Southeastern Regional School Committee posting for February 16th, 2023. That was a Subcommittee, members of the school committee were just me and Ms. Ladani. But if members have questions or things to add, or points of clarification, since it was just Ms. Ladani and myself representing, we would be happy to fill in.
I'd move to accept the Subcommittee minutes of February 16th.
I'd like to second.
Thank you both.
Jinx.
Thank you. We'll go with Mr. Pearson, Mr. Canfield, seconding. All those in favor? Thank you for that, everyone. I appreciate it. It's 500. Those are now also approved for publication and submission. Next, our teaching and learning highlight, Burrow School. Ms. Parr, Mr. Worth, Ms. Bean, Ms. Whitehouse, and Ms. Lakava. Dr. Berdos, would you like to introduce anybody?
I would love to invite all of you up.
Please do. Come on up.
To our guest table, with Mr. Worth, the principal, and of our fabulous faculty and staff here with our preschool. When we talk about K-12 education, we catch ourselves a lot of times and have to go back and say, "pre-K-12," because it is about our preschool. That is the beginning at the Burrow School, where we host our preschool program in our beautiful preschool classrooms. But if you have ever had the opportunity to go through preschool, you will be truly amazed at what you see with what our students do because of our faculty and staff that are working with them every single day. It is a wonderful, happy place, and it is amazing the progress and the foundation that they are setting for all of our school-age students. And you talk about having that as your foundation before you enter into kindergarten. It's something that we're all very, very proud of. We've got Mr. Michael Azic here as well, because he oversees that part. And it's just, I'll just throw it over to you, because it's just a lot to learn.
Thank you so much, Dr. Berdos. So, Ms. Diana Parr and I, our promise to the preschool teachers and team was that we would kind of take care of this presentation, and they would come. We got them all here.
So you did want to come on.
But we are extremely grateful that they came. I think that their presence here really shows their unwavering dedication to the preschool program, taking time out of their evening to come here tonight. So it's really a meaningful way to start our presentation. And thank you so much for allowing us to present on this, and thank you for all the support. I'm honored to speak to you tonight about our preschool. It's an incredible place. It has an incredible impact on all of our students. Like Dr. Berdos said, when we talk about the preschool, we're really talking about the pre-K to 12 education. And I want to make sure that we never, you know, it's never an oversight. We never forget about that important piece. It's a hidden gem at Burrow. There's so many wonderful things that happen at the Burrow School, and I had a really hard time figuring out what I wanted to present to you tonight. In fact, from the time that I signed up for this in August, I was giving it a lot of thought and really racking my brain. What do I want to present? What's the most special thing at the Burrow School out of everything? And I determined that that was preschool. Preschool is unique, because it's something that we not only take pride in at the Burrow School, but we can take pride in the preschool as a district. It's something that serves the entire community, and it's something that is truly special, and not overlooked, but sometimes forgotten within the school district. I often rave about the preschool to everybody, anybody who will listen. I was speaking about it in a meeting that I had with Mr. Michael Azic one day, and he said, "Wow, you really love the preschool." And that's kind of when I had the realization, it's something that I should present on. It's something that I should bring forward as a teaching and learning highlight, and really show what a great program we have at the Burrow School. The first thing that I'm going to show you tonight is a video. I went into one of the preschool classrooms a few weeks ago. They were talking about kindness. They had just read a book about kindness, and they were going around the room asking students what kindness meant to them. And one of the boys in the class said, "Kindness is giving love out." And I thought it was such a simple way to put it, and it was such a way that I had never really thought about kindness before. And kindness is something that we talk about in K-4 education, in K-12 education, something that we really value in our community. So you'll have an opportunity to see some students talking about kindness and responding to the question, "How can you be a kind and caring friend?"
How can you be a kind and caring friend?
To share candy. Say, "I love you." Say, "Compliment."
We can hug someone.
I love being kind, because I love to be a special kid to everyone. And I love everyone, so that's why I want to be a kind kid. I don't want to be a mean kid, because I want to be a kind, very kind kid, and hold hands and give everyone hugs, like when someone gets married, and kisses someone else. And she tells all about who died.
You can give hugs. You can... Some people, letters that that tells you that you are loved, and you can become best friends. If someone is in the backyard and going on adventure with friends.
Diane, can you be my friend?
Hug someone.
Lot of hugs going on.
A lot of hugs. Yeah. So kindness is just one thing that they touch upon in preschool, but it's such an important piece of, you know, learning to be a student, learning to be a community member, really learning to, you know, do well by the community. So who we serve? I'll pass it over to Diana.
Yep. We serve any child in Foxborough. Our preschool program is a lottery. You have to be three years old. Oops.
I forgot to mention. Thank you.
You have to be three years old by August 31st, all the way up to five years old. So some kids, we have, depending on where their birthday falls, we have for three years. Students that also attend are eligible for programming based on their disability or their educational needs, and the lottery system. And we have many classes, three classrooms, one sub-separate, two integrated, and morning sessions, afternoon sessions, two, three, and four-day sessions for the kids to come.
In the classrooms, they serve up to 16 students, as well as a substantially separate classroom. Like Diana was saying, we offer two, three, and four-day classes for peer models in both the morning and afternoon sessions. I just want to point out, this is one of the newly added structures on our preschool playground that students enjoy on a daily basis, multiple times a day.
That's great.
You can see from some of the pictures what our preschool classroom looks like. It's interactive. It's hands-on. Students aren't just, you know, sitting down. They're really constantly moving throughout the day. They're making decisions. They have autonomy over their learning.
Preschool is committed to offering the environment that encourages diversity, inclusion, and cooperation. I hear often that, "Oh, Foxborough's not that diverse." And if you come to the preschool classroom, it's pretty diverse. We have lots of languages. We have lots of different cultures. We do skill acquisition through a multisensory approach. As you can see, the bottom left is a dramatic play setting that was an ice skating café, and they are making hot chocolate and serving customers. There's some, I believe, that snow that they're writing letters in on the top left and top right. And this was in the winter, obviously. We didn't get much snow. But there we are, trying to teach snow, in winter, without any snow. So we made it ourselves. It's just an approach that, when you're teaching a particular concept, we do it in every developmental area. So you're getting it in language. You're getting it, the cognitive piece. You're getting it in the math piece. You're getting it in the numbers, the letters. But it's all based on that same kind of theme-ish type of thing, so that we touch on kids' different learning styles and intelligences.
I was down in preschool shortly before Thanksgiving this year. They were talking about fall harvest. They were talking about vegetables. They were talking about sharing with the community, and they had built a grocery store in the classroom. And they were actually going through, they were using money. They were buying groceries from the grocery store. Two weeks ago, I walked in, and they had built a mailroom. So they had a post office. Students were telling me about what the post office is, what service a post office and post office workers play a role in the community. It was unbelievable. It completely blew me away.
It got pricey for stamps, though.
It did. Yeah, I couldn't afford it. I couldn't afford it.
Very pricey.
So our approach, the Burrow Integrated Preschool provides an enriching developmentally-appropriate experience for students. And you'll see that throughout tonight's presentation. We focus on early learning, socialization, social-emotional learning, school readiness, language development, and cognitive development.
The staff consists of special educators, who are classroom teachers as well, educational assistants, speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, and the school counselor. Very collaborative in supporting each student. And most of our services are pushed in the classroom, so everybody gets small-group work. Everybody gets access to the OT if you need it. Even if you're not on an IEP, we fold you into a group. It's a lot of that MTSS that you've heard over the past couple of years, and that kind of support. And it starts at the preschool setting. You can see the PT working with the student. That's actually a physical therapy, working on standing. And the occupational therapist is down at the bottom, and classroom teacher, top right, and assistant working one-on-one with a student in the classroom. And it looks like everybody, you can't tell who is what, or who is who. Everybody, it's all-inclusive. You wouldn't know who the teachers were and the assistants, and you don't know who the students requiring services are either. So I think that's something that's really special, that the staff works really hard to make that flow and that continuity of care and programming.
Truly, the way that the staff works collaboratively with one another is exemplary. It's a model for how collaborative teaching and collaborative learning should look in a school at truly any level. It's really an amazing thing to see. We had hoped to have a parent or students come here. I joked with someone a few minutes ago that this is kind of on the edge of students' bedtime in preschool. I have a daughter who's in preschool, and she has a very consistent seven o'clock bedtime. So unfortunately, we weren't able to have students come and visit tonight. We did, however, have a parent who very kindly and graciously created a video to watch, and this is really our why. This is why, you know, the preschool team does what they do every day.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Elliott, and I'm the mother of Wendy and Abby Elliott. They are five years old, and they have spent three incredible years in the preschool program at the Burrow. Our girls were born at 26 weeks, at 1 pound 10 and 1 pound 11 ounces. They had a four-month stay at the Brigham and Women's NICU, and we had early intervention immediately after discharge from the hospital. I had left my job to care for them full-time, and it was emotionally and physically exhausting to juggle the many appointments, therapies, on top of being a new twin mom. When their third birthday arrived, to transfer services to the public school system, we really didn't know what to expect, or how others would really react to our children's delays. Every medical professional had told us that most micropreviews catch up by their second birthday, and we knew that that was not the case with our children, despite us doing everything by the book. At the services evaluation meeting with Diana Parr and the staff, we brought both of our girls. Wendy had separation anxiety and sensory processing, especially with loud noises like fire alarms. And Abby, who had been diagnosed with autism at 22 months, was inconsolable at her evaluation. She was irritated with any interaction in comfort, and was unable to even complete it due to her fear and anxiety. She did not walk yet, on top of having a vision impairment and a gastric feeding tube. Diana and the staff were clear from the beginning that we had a team of caring and proactive teachers to help lead the way, and we are all on the same page in our goals of ensuring that both girls were going to be learning in the least restrictive environment. A great example was evident from day one. At pickup and drop-off, Abby's teacher, Stephanie Whitehouse, brought out her umbrella stroller so that we didn't have to park and carry her into school. For three years, both girls qualified for services, and would be provided with support in the classroom and on the playground to help them thrive. Today, I'm amazed at the progress that I see in both of my girls. Wendy, social butterfly, making friends with anyone she meets. She celebrates differences and embodies true, genuine kindness. She is learning to identify her feelings when she encounters frustrations, and help others when they are challenged. She's able to calm herself down, and has embraced being more independent in her activities. Abby has done a complete 180 from her evaluation. She's the snuggle queen, who loves to visit the gross motor room with her birthday twin, Abby Lagavalle. With the help of her speech teacher, Kathy Mulcahy, she is trialing an AAC device with great success. She took her first official steps with Sue Snyder at ESY the summer of 2021, only two months shy of turning four. But most noteworthy is that she has matured emotionally and socially under the considerate, caring watch of her teacher, Stephanie Whitehouse. Stephanie has gone above and beyond to ensure that Abby is supported, and given the time for her to learn on her own terms. This has become the secret sauce to Abby's learning model. Abby has the ability, but she has to call the shots. She learns different, not less. Stephanie sees that and respects those boundaries. We are so grateful that we are in the public schools at Foxborough, and that our girls... We are so grateful that we are in the public schools at Foxborough and that our girls have had the incredible support of the preschool program. It's a tremendous resource to families with special needs, children in the Foxborough community like myself. Thank you for everything, Abby, Kathy, Lisa, Sue, Jess, Nancy, Janie, Liz, Miss D, Annie, and Diana Parr. You guys are all rock stars.
That happens because of them, to every kid that walks through that door. This is just one success story.
So we spoke a little bit about our mission and some of the things that we do at the preschool. Early learning is a really important part of preschool. That involves providing young children with an opportunity to learn through play and exploration. We spoke a little bit about this. They have an opportunity to explore different materials, concepts, social emotional learning, as well as academic readiness as part of that as well, and really developing a deep love of learning at an early age. That is one of our main objectives, to get students excited to come to school, to get them to, you know, be interested in school, and really to start to develop that love of learning that we talk about at every single level, from preschool to 12th grade.
We work a lot on socialization, especially in the post-COVID years. I'm seeing lots of children right now that I bring in through the early intervention that, or even the peer models that haven't left their house in a couple of years. They have no experience with playing with other kids. And depending on the culture, they may not have toys in their home, depending on the socioeconomics of their family. They may not have an enriching home environment with even space to develop just what kids develop just by being home and outside, inside, at the park. That's been gone for the past couple of years. So we're seeing some, a lot of deprived socially kids coming in right now. So part of the other piece of that is that they have a hard time leaving their parents more so than in the past. So we spend a lot of time at the very beginning of school and through the years, through the school year, to help the kids interact with one another and to get safe and feel safe in an outside environment beyond their home setting. This helps them to develop important social skills, sharing, turn-taking, empathy, and working together.
Social emotional learning, it's something that, you know, we dedicate a lot of resources, time, conversations, we dedicate, you know, a good portion of the day to it throughout the entire district. It starts in preschool. It really, it kind of, it's the foundation of, you know, social emotional learning for a lot of our students. We are dedicated to providing this to students as they enter. Like Diana Parr was saying, you know, a lot of students are coming to us now in preschool. They have increased separation anxiety, they don't have exposure to as much, you know, as we thought that they might in the past. It's really important for them to feel safe, to feel comfortable, to be with a team of caring, dedicated, professional staff every single day. And it's a great sense of pride that we provide that to students.
I think these pictures in particular, look at the team of doctors with the empathy and the care. I mean, we get a lot of concern going on there, a lot of second opinions. And again, on the right, just, you know, you guys don't know the history of these kids, but that's a little boy who wouldn't ever be able to even sit up like that on that swing and the joy that he's taking in it. And then on the left, that's actually a potato head with different facial things that they can put in it, so make different expressions just to make that connection. She's clearly happy.
As am I every time I visit preschool. Language development, preschool provides young children with an opportunity to develop their language skills. Oftentimes, as Diana and anybody in preschool would tell you, students come to us with little to no language skills, and, you know, part of our work is providing them with the tools, the resources, the patience, and the professional expertise to be able to help them develop those language skills and really be successful as they move out of preschool. And we talk about kindergarten readiness a lot. This is a huge part of kindergarten readiness. Every single one of these pieces is getting students ready to be successful in kindergarten. Especially, you know, over the years, kindergarten has increased academic demands, increased social emotional demands, just overall, and getting students ready for those is an important part of our work in preschool.
School readiness, preschool helps prepare the children for the transition to kindergarten. As Robert mentioned, they learn basic academic skills such as counting, letters, and shapes all through play. It's not worksheets, it's not skill and drill. It's really hands-on, manipulatives, and it's fun, and that's what we want to foster with kids, that, you know, numbers and letters are fun and cool, and you can see it in the engagement in the pictures.
One of the misconceptions about preschool is that it's just play, and it's really so much more than that. There was definitely a point in my professional career where I would have said the same thing. I would have said that preschool is just play, it's just where students kind of go, it's maybe like a step beyond daycare. I do not believe that, in the very least now. I mean, it's truly, it's an academic readiness program, it gets students kindergarten ready, it's a place where they're learning about the community, they're learning, you know, those early childhood skills that are so important for them. And cognitive development, something that, you know, trails throughout the program. It's an opportunity to develop cognitive skills, to learn critically, think critically, solve problems, work collaboratively. The staff models that collaboration for students, and they really pick up on that. And together, you know, students, they do amazing things. This is actually the grocery store over here on the left. You can see that's the conveyor belt, and this was all built by students and by the staff of preschool, so.
That got really pricey, too. Yeah, they were having, they had labels to label all of the different, how much is that cereal? We had Cheerios, like real food boxes and things, right? So the kids could make.
What about eggs? How are eggs?
$10 for a box of Cheerios. $10. $25 for eggs. It was incredible. $100 for coffee, I would never survive.
And that's all we have. We welcome any questions, and again, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to present this in front of you tonight.
Thank you.
Comments and questions for the committee?
So this is a requirement. The next time you comment, do a teaching and learning highlight, you have to pass out tissues first. Okay? Because there were tears throughout the entire room with both videos. So that's just my only, that's my only comment, is you have to pass out tissues first.
Will do.
My comment is more of an observation. While, I like watching you all. While you were talking about the grocery store and the mail system, everyone over here was like, saying, yes, yes, of course, that's what we do, yes, obviously, that's, why wouldn't you do that? And then as soon as they started the parent video, tears. Which was just, it was just beautiful to see, all of you, just how deeply you care.
I also want to add to that, that it's not just, it's just not the integrated class that does these cool things. It's, subseparate classrooms doing the same thing.
That's what they do.
Right, that's what they do. They tweak it to make it developmentally appropriate for whoever walks through the door. Everybody has a job, everybody has a role, everybody participates, everybody's included, and everybody's welcome.
It's wonderful. Other members of the committee?
I would just say, thank you so much for coming and presenting to us, because it's always great to see what's happening. We can imagine what's happening, but it's great to be able to see it. I was just going to ask, besides, you know, seeing the social delays, are there anything else that you've noticed that's happening with the children that are coming to you? Any differences or anything else?
We're seeing a huge increase in dual languages or lack of English.
Sure.
And so that's a little bit challenging to manage, because just because you don't speak English doesn't mean that you're disabled or that you have a disability.
Correct.
Has to be in both languages, and we're not always able to test in the native language. Seldom to never able to test in the native language, and so it's really difficult to know. Add COVID to that, you haven't had any exposure to English, and now we're giving you a test.
Yeah.
So I would say that's one of the more challenging, more recent. Do you guys think of anything else that you're seeing?
I, oh, sorry.
They're all shaking their heads, no.
So while they're thinking, I'll add one thing. There's definitely more challenges now, but one of the incredible things, not just in preschool, but throughout elementary school and probably in middle school and high school as well, I'm not entirely sure, but I can assume, students are resilient. They really are. They overcome the most difficult things, the things that, you know, might bog us down, the things that we might anticipate are really large barriers, they overcome them. And it's unbelievable, it's beautiful to watch. I mean, it really is. They just, students, even our youngest students, they're resilient.
And I think you've also added to cultivating that kind of a culture in our school, that it's a kind and caring culture. So the older kids nurture the younger kids, always. It's, the doors are open and people are interacting and supportive.
Thank you very much for that. I would just add, children are resilient when you give them the opportunity, and they need the resources and the opportunity to be resilient. And so thank you very much for giving these students that opportunity, because it's hard work. I understand it's hard work to be able to give that.
It's preschool bedtime.
Yep. Thank you so much.
Actually, I was going to say, that's a great message. We should send that one home. What is preschool bedtime? How critical is it for our kids to be rested when they get to school to learn? It really is. I hate the lecture from the school committee, but if we all were rested at all levels of education, it would help us so very much. So that's my moment of lecture. It makes a difference. You said it, you know, bedtime is seven, so, good call. But I was just going to thank the team, you'd mentioned team a couple of times, and you'd mentioned team as well. And so I was thinking, you know, you have to visualize it, that the whole team, that whole team is moving around, all three of those classrooms constantly sharing, sharing ideas, adding to ideas, right? So I think the team is really, really critical. And when I look at the pictures, you talked a little bit about play, right? But I hope people that are watching this really understand the depth that goes into designing, designing, I wouldn't call it play, designing what's there to make it accessible to all students. I don't think people totally understand what that is. To allow this group of students, for their two or three years' opportunity, to be ready to learn, to give them the launching pad and the opportunity to be ready to learn and have some kind of base that maybe other people don't have out of the gate. So it's just the work and the effort that goes behind that, I don't think people really understand. The nonstop effort, too, you know, because the kids are with you nonstop, so it takes a great deal of effort. So thank you. Thank you for all of that. I'm sorry to be repeating all the things you just said, but.
No, thank you for pointing that out.
It has to be highlighted that way, how critically important it is.
Because I want to do so, as other members of this committee are, we had talked about the immense need that you all meet, and we've talked, and I hope we're able to talk more in the upcoming months and years, about what's next, because we're all, I am, deeply impressed by what you all do. I would love, at some point, to be able to say that we don't have kids on the waitlist, that there isn't a lottery and there's not a need for one. That's more of a position statement than anything, but I hope you all are part of that in terms of looking forward. I've heard Mr. Yugna talk about it, and there's a lot of things that need to happen to make that possible, but I'm just saying that, that I would love for every pre-K kid in our community to have the opportunity that those that are working with you now have. And I think that's, it's just something I think that would be good for everybody, generationally moving forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the support.
You guys are coming. Really, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank all of you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Understanding that every pre-K teacher wants to stay for the entire meeting, I do know that you get up early, so perhaps, you know, you want to consider your other options at this moment?
I think that's what she meant when she said pre-K bedtime.
Oh, no, that wasn't lost on me.
Yeah, that's not just the kids.
No, Ms. Parr is good at telling us to wrap it up. It's one of her many, many charms. Next up, superintendent update, Dr. Berdus, please.
All right, first, I'd like to start off with congratulating our FHS Jazz Ensemble for being admitted into essentially Ellington. Once again, at the Lincoln Center in New York, what a great, it's a great tribute to everything that they do, and it's the hard work that goes into that. It really is something that's significant, and I worry sometimes that people don't realize what an amazing accomplishment it is, because they have been there the number of times that they have, but it really is significant. But it goes back to the dedication and commitment of our students and of our staff. So congratulations to them by being one of 15 finalists, to be able to get back into essentially Ellington.
Dr. Berdus, I'm sorry.
Keep going.
And you may not know this off the top of your head, so the thing that's always remarkable to me whenever we are able to share this news, is of those 15 finalists, how many of them are arts schools versus?
Yes.
Public schools? Do you know that number from that 15?
I don't know the number, but I can tell you easily, it's the majority of them. It really is, we are the complete minority. They're not public comprehensive high schools like ours, and if they are, they're not going to be the size that our high school is. It really is extraordinary.
Right. Yeah, that's always one of the things that I remark, that I note whenever we see the list, so thank you.
Well, and combining to that and piggybacking on that, for the number of years that we've had this festival, or that essentially Ellington's been around, they've made it many, many times within that.
And it's not because they see the name Foxborough High School, so they have this expectation. It's a blind audition. They're sending in their tapes. They don't know who they're listening to at that time, and they're still selected based on, you know, when you think about the repertoire, what they're playing. It just, it really is extraordinary.
No, it's really special.
I just want to make one more comment, because I think I do know the answer to it. I think it's actually even more difficult than people know. If you've been to the festival in the previous year, they made a rule that they limited the opportunity to only five returners.
Really?
Yeah. So they went from the 15 overall, which was what it was when it started back in 1997, '98, and then over time, because there were returning people all the time, so returners actually had a spot for only five of the 15. So I think it's actually pretty finite to get back to the table. It's pretty significant, and total blind recording, and the people that listen to the recordings, I know the names of the people, they are absolutely the finest jazz musicians on the planet. I mean, these are handpicked probably by Wynton Marsalis and his band out in New York City, so these are not just any average musician, they are the best in the world, and they have ears like no tomorrow. So they hear it all.
And we've had a few students.
I don't know what to say, we've had, yeah.
We've had a few students who've sat here and presented to this committee, who, they didn't say it, but their teachers did, have essentially standing offers, like, come see me when you're done. And I mean, come on, that's, it's incredible.
We had one that subbed in, I know for a fact, he graduated back in the early 2000s, so he's sat right next to Wynton. Amazing. Yeah, it's real.
So think about the concerts you can go to just at Foxborough High School to be able to hear at that level.
Right, yeah, true. It's great.
Sorry to derail your.
No, it's worth talking about. So what I have is a number of things that are sent out through principals' emails, but I just want to bring them to the attention. It's really important, there's a lot of information that goes out, like when we think about today's the last day for spring signups through Family ID, you know, that goes out, that's in Mr. Donovan's newsletter, along with many other important dates, particularly You know, that goes out, that's in, uh, Mr. Donovan's newsletter, along with many other important dates, particularly for our seniors at this, you know, time in, in their, uh, K, pre-K 12 education. Tonight, we have our second playoff game. I don't know what the score is.
Looks like they won.
We won? Did we? Yes.
Looks like they won.
Seventy-one to thirty-five.
And, uh, I'm, and I, if only by glancing, because it was that garish, I believe, uh, Coach Lisa Downs did, in fact, wear the fuchsia pantsuit that her team bought for her. I want to say it's Savers, mostly because she always wears a pantsuit.
She is wearing fuchsia.
And, 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 yep, and, uh, and, and she did make good on her promise to wear the gift of the team in honor of her 200th win.
Fantastic.
It's, it's diabolical is what it is.
Yeah, it's got a law school spirit.
Yeah, really. Good on them. Good on them.
Um, also that's taking place tonight for the first time is a joint effort between our CPAC and the Mansfield CPAC at the, um, Resource Fair for students, uh, for families. It's amazing, um, the number. I think Mr. Michael Azic told me there were like 60. Oh, he's still here. Cindy, you're still here, because I know you're going there. Vendors that are there.
Thank you. That's great.
So he, he's, uh, trying to be in two places at once this evening. But that's really bringing local organizations together that specialize in providing supports for our families. And whether it comes to social services, whether it's emotional support, um, education, social enrichment, different activities. So great, fantastic fair. Um, I'm sure it's going fabulous.
No, that's good. That's, uh, well done on the effort to get that, all those people together.
But I think it speaks a lot of the collaboration too, when you think about, you know, with Mr. Michael Azic, Karen Foxborough, with his CPAC and all of their parents that are involved there, and then with the CPAC in Mansfield. So great collaborative effort to really bring what is going to be, um, a great resource for families and students. Um, tomorrow, we have another event that's taking place for parents. That'll be over at the Burl. And that one is with, um, Dr. Larry Epstein, who you've heard about. He's done a number of different events for us. And he's going to be speaking, um, with families on social, emotional learning and your student. And that will be taking place from six to eight. And, and that really is focusing on, you know, integrating skills, uh, with students and thinking about how you can best build their competencies. When we think about social, emotional learning competencies, and we talk about the castle competencies and decision-making and self-awareness and, and all of those different things that we integrate naturally within our curriculum. But how can parents also do that in a way, um, within the home environment? And support what's taking place in the educational environment for a true partnership. Also, this week, on Wednesday, just a reminder, we have our AdCom meeting that's taking place. Um, that was rescheduled, and so that's taking place tomorrow, that joint meeting. Um, Coral Palooza, we're talking about music. That concert is taking place on Thursday at the high school at 6:30. And then also on Thursday, which is really exciting, Unified Basketball. The, the middle school Unified Basketball, over 40. About 40, um, students.
Great.
Unified Basketball. We've got a game coming up, and, um, that's at the Ahern Gem. So that's really exciting, a lot of interest, and then a lot of different, um, districts that are going to be participating there. Our cheerleaders, um, not surprising here, they are going to the All-State Championship on Sunday. And so they are kind of the reigning champions here, um, the second-time defending state champions. That's at Worcester State University this weekend.
That's this weekend, right?
Also later this week, best of luck to our DECA students as they go to states. So that's another thing that's taking place. And then next week, believe it or not, we are at the end of the second trimester for report cards for elementary. Those will be going out. And then as another reminder, there is no school next Friday, March 17th. That's a change from our typical calendar for Professional Development Day for our staff that's taking place. And, um, also, we've got Dr. Barry Plummer, who's going to be doing some more parent events for us when we think about social, emotional learning and social development through coffee hours that will be taking place. So, a lot, as usual, happening. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, and I know that I've received some emails from parents as, um, principals and, uh, Bill has as well. We just want to thank families for the patience and understanding as we continue to struggle with our shortage of bus drivers. That is something that we are working very actively on. One of the things that has come out, that is something that we're doing in the immediacy, is more communication to families. We know that if the bus is going to be late, if there's other ways through School Messenger, that we're going to have our transportation, um, manager and assistant manager be able to be on School Messenger. So that way, if families have the School Messenger app downloaded on their phone, they can get push notifications whenever they're sending out, uh, you know, bus X is, is running late. Sometimes it's out of our control, you know, there's a, an accident on 95 and 140 is backed up. And so that's happening. But we're going to be sending out more messages in real time to give families a heads up if we have a bus that's going to be late. Um, when we, when we know that's happening. And we've had to merge some bus runs. I don't know, Bill, if you wanted to add anything else there.
Yeah, I, I, again, I think we unfortunately have had a number of medical, uh, outs on drivers, so, uh, we're short for that reason. We're also short for, you know, just not being able to hire. We have a few that are in the pipeline, so that hopefully will, uh, help to, uh, you know, bring us back to our full complement. But, um, again, a lot of times, it's, it's not necessarily that we're a driver short. It's, it's a lot of issues. We had an accident on South Street one day at the high school, which created a whole series of problems. Uh, we have the, the West Street, uh, dam that's, that's being rebuilt. That requires us to really reroute around the entire town to get to those areas. So, you know, as much as we, we try to manage that process, it's not always controllable. And, and I think, uh, as Dr. Burrow said, it's the, the obvious thing that came out of it is just us trying to have better communication. So, you know, starting, uh, in the next couple of days, as we get the Transportation Department on, um, School Messenger and get them trained up on it, then we will start to push those messages out as well, uh, as best we can.
Thank you. And as a family who's been impacted by that, the communication has been pretty fluid, um, through tough circumstances. So my own family thanks you.
We, we know it's hard on, on students and on families. And, um, if we can communicate more in real time, we know that that will be helpful. It might not solve it immediately, but communication's always good.
Any questions or comments from committee members regarding any of the numerous items on Dr. Berdus's update? That's great. Thank you so much for, uh, the comprehensive updates. A lot going on. It's very exciting. All right, folks. Uh, next, uh, is the vote to amend the BIKO, Bi-County Collaborative Agreement to add CCONC Public Schools to the membership. Dr. Berdus, any commentary?
Sure. So there are 19 or 20 districts that are a member of the Bi-County Collaborative. And those are for some of our students that are, um, were not able to serve their best needs in district. And so if we can, the collaborative is a great place in partnership, and we're a member district. And there are many times other districts want to be, become members of BIKO. And CCONC is an example of one of those. They have, um, wanted to become a member for several years now. I sit on the Board of Directors as, um, the superintendent for one of those member districts. All superintendents make up the board, and we are the voting body and look to see from a budget standpoint, from a, um, service delivery, being able to meet the needs, whenever other districts are interested in becoming a member of the collaborative. Because partly it makes a difference. If they're paying a member fee versus a non-member fee when they have students that they need to send out a district because they're not able to best meet their needs within their district. And so we've, um, had conversations with CCONC really prior to COVID. It was a matter of going into COVID. It was not a time. And we're at the point now to where we, as a board, felt that we could accept another district into the collaborative. And as part of that, every single district that's a member has to have school committees vote on their membership. So that's what you have before you, is the collaborative agreement to accept CCONC as a member district starting as of July 1.
And is it the recommendation of your, the full board?
It is the recommendation of the board to accept them as a member district.
Okay. Thank you so much for being so thorough. Um, any questions or commentary from the committee?
Can I ask, uh, is there any, uh, is there a, a, a limit that, I mean, because there could be other communities always wanting to. Is there any, what, what goes into the decision? I mean?
Part of the decision is a matter of, we, we don't want to just have people come on board. We need something from them in return, and part of that is space. So as an example, we have two classrooms at the Ahern Middle School where there are BIKO classrooms. So we're looking kind of, it's a partnership. You have space within your building. It makes sense as far as within the area that's serving all of our districts. And that's a benefit to the collaborative of having you come on board as a member district. I don't know, Mr. Michael Azic, if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I've been, um, part of BIKO, if you will, for the last several years. The executive director, I work for personally. Um, so one of the collaborative, in comparison to the other collaborators across the state, the number of programs, resources, professional development, those types of things.
Corey, can you come up to the microphone? They're not going to be able to hear you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, thanks, Mr. Michael Azic. Sorry, we shouldn't, we should have said that sooner.
So BIKO, uh, in itself is a, is a large collaborative, and in comparison to the other collaborators across the state, the number of programs that they offer within public schools, right? They have roughly, I would say, right now, probably about 20 programs, right? And then in addition to that, professional development, uh, addition to that, I sit on the operating committee as well as a special education director with the other districts. And so, um, part of the process last year was creating their strategic plan. So they're an extension of the public school system, which is nice. So whenever we need assessments, really, really specialized assessments to be done for some of our students that require those, they're usually our first go-to, and we just have a really, really great relationship with them because they work together with us. And like I said, they're an extension of our, of our public school system here, and, um, they're also a wonderful partner with us in our, our middle school program as well.
Thanks for that. I'm glad you, uh, you came up with the words that weren't coming into my mind about, they're, they're participating with it too. So they're participating, they offer up something to the group, which is a critical piece of the puzzle, right? Because everyone comes together to share the resources and all, uh, own the resources, own the resources, own the opportunity. So I, I think that's just a valuable piece of it. So thanks for saying that.
And, again, connecting it to myself, uh, not being intimately as familiar with, um, special education as you all are, is this, the, the, the services that our students say could get through BIKO is in lieu of outside, full outside placement? Or is it?
So.
A half measure?
Some of it, right? So, for example, um, we have some students that require TVI services. Oh, orientation mobility services, and, um, it's really tough to come by. And so they, they employ personnel within their own programs that we're able to contract with. So although sometimes it's not necessarily an educational placement, it could be a, uh, really specialized service that we're not able to provide in-house because we just don't have the cohort of need of students. So instead, it, because it's so isolated, we reach out to them, and they work with us around those. And like I said, it's kind of similar to the assessments that sometimes we would recommend for some of our kids that we're not able to do in-house by our school psychologists and whatnot. So, um, it's really just an opportunity for us to expand what we offer in the district, to provide kids with the least restrictive environment here in-house while partnering with BIKO. So, um, like I said, it's a, it's a wonderful collaborative.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the framing. Any other comments or questions prior to moving? Okay, with that.
I make a motion that we, uh, vote to accept the amendment to the BIKO Collaborative Agreement to add CCONC Public Schools to the membership.
I'll second it.
Thank you, um, Mr. Cantfield, Mr. Pearson, all those in favor? That's 500 to approve, and welcome to BIKO-CCONC. Thank you, Dr. Berdus, for setting that up so thoroughly.
Thank, thank you for the answer.
Thank you, Corey, as well.
Thank you, Mr. Michael Azic. Thank you, Mr. Worth. All right, with that, uh, we're going to move on to the Foxborough Public Schools', uh, discussion of our mascot. And for terminology purposes, we'll say mascot versus symbol or logo. Mascot can be, uh, held in for name, the Warriors. And as background for anybody interested, um, this is a issue that, um, has come before the committee, off and on, and as early as, uh, 2012, although it probably extends prior, but that's the extent of my, my knowledge through people I've talked to. Uh, with folks from the public, uh, raising, um, concerns a, a, about, about the, uh, nature of, um, either our mascot name or logo or symbol, which is, uh, an indigenous, uh, person's likeness, uh, in the circle. Over the years, the community inbox and public comment, um, have had people speak to this. Most recently, this last round, uh, we had some folks submit, um, their, their opinions on that, or specifically their concerns about the use of an indigenous symbols in our, um, in our symbols that we use for the Foxborough Public Schools. Um, so that's where this is coming from. Um, further as background, this issue probably would have come up in, uh, more earnestly if it weren't for, uh, the timing of the COVID pandemic, as there was a push to discuss this, uh, near the end of 2019, early 2020. And then, uh, the school committees and administration doing what they do and, and trying to prioritize issues. This was, uh, uh, very thoughtfully and soundly put on the back burner. And, uh, it's been, it's been brought back. Now, um, there is a bill in the Mass State Legislature that's been kicking around a while, and it's back again. That's not why we're discussing it now. That's just a fact. That, knowing to a committee member, uh, requesting that it be put on the agenda, um, with, and combined with public comment and, and the past history of this issue coming up is why it's, it's coming up now. So that's more concerning, the timing. In terms of how we move forward with this discussion, I'm pretty loose in this stuff in the sense that I'll entertain a lot of things at, at any time as chair. But I provided a flow chart, uh, in our packets. Um, public can get this as well. And, and the reason for the flow chart is just to keep myself and other committee members, uh, eye on the ball, as it were, in terms of those things which are actionable by us. What are things that we can decide? What are things that we want to decide, um, and when? And there absolutely is an order of events, uh, when it comes to this, if you look at other communities as a model. So the main question, um, before us is, in terms of whether we keep, alter, or retire Foxborough's Warrior mascot, that's the name, uh, or indigenous-inspired symbols, uh, as part of our logo. That's something we, as a committee, can decide to take up as an issue or not. So that's decision one. If we decide to take it up, moving forward on the flow chart, the question is, do we affirmatively decide to keep everything as it is? That's a decision we can make. Or do we decide to make a change of some kind? And then moving on to the, what would be the second column with the gold, um, circles, those questions would be, are we entertaining a change of the mascot and the name, as well as the symbol that got cut off? Just the name, or just the indigenous-inspired symbols? Those are things for us to consider. Moving forward along any of those trees, then it becomes the then what, depending on what is decided. I would, uh, wholeheartedly, this is a request, not a mandate, since I can't mandate, being one of five, that we keep the discussion ordered in terms of things, and not worry about things that are further down the chain before we discuss things that are more, um, at the foundation of this mascot, uh, and, and symbol concern. That's just my preamble. So with that.
Can you, for?
Please.
Just the general public, the guidance that we perceive from MASC on why this is a school committee?
Thank you.
Decision?
Yeah.
Be useful.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. Cantfield. Um, and so, many might ask, every school committee member might also ask, is this our issue to consider? Is it the superintendent? Is it the town manager? Is it the athletic director? Is it each individual coach? And, um, the, the, the decision in this state and others is it's 100% absolutely per view of the school committee. And it's under, of the R3 duties, budget, evaluation, and policy, it's most squarely put under the policy wing of our responsibilities. And the reason it gets put under the policy wing, according to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, as well as other state associations of school committees. is that anytime a, a decision impacts the community more broadly and the schools more broadly, than one program, one school, one coach, one, one arts program, one academic club, so on and so forth, it 100% falls under the purview of the school committee, mostly to bring public voice and unity to an issue that impacts the whole community. And that is my understanding, is the rationale why the ball would be firmly placed in our court, should this be something we decide to take up.
Right. So, just to reiterate, that is consistent guidance from the body that we, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, which is the body that we align ourselves with, as well as consistent with many other states.
That is correct.
By the same guidance to their, so we're, we're acting in alignment with a consistent policy that is broader than Foxborough, the local area.
Broader than Foxborough. It extends to the rest of the Commonwealth and as well as to other states.
Thank you.
No, thank you. I appreciate you asking the question. So, given that the ball would be in our court, should we choose to accept it? I would invite questions, comments, clear, points of clarification from the committee. At the outset, I should have said that this item was deliberately placed on our agenda tonight. Thank you, Janet. As information only, that it's not the intent to push forward a vote tonight unless it's the will of the committee to change that. But this was meant to more just open the discussion, the purpose of the flow chart. And the purpose of the supporting materials provided in our packet is simply to frame out what, what might come next, depending on what members of the committee want to have happen, understanding that all of us are 20% of the whole. And with that, I'll sit in comfortable silence.
Comfortable silence?
For once.
So, I would, I would just say, just for, you know, discussion purposes, I think in, in looking at how the sports teams have been kind of over the last several years, looking at their uniforms, what they do for the boosters, booster clubs, what they're purchasing and putting on the team's sweatshirts, whatever they're buying.
Yeah.
I, I think it's evident to see that the indigenous-inspired symbols are phasing their way out over time. And so, I, I look at that as sort of a message that's coming from the, the students, from the coaches, kind of in, in looking at that. I feel differently about the Warrior name. I personally think that it's, it's a great name. It has way more than just any ties to indigenous people. I look at it as really talking about grit. You know, if you're a Warrior, you've got grit. You're, you're pushing through whatever challenges that you have. And I did really appreciate kind of the, the article, I guess, or statement that was included in this about Foxborough and its Warrior pride. I think that that was very nice to be able to read. So, that would be kind of how I look at the two distinct issues, that they are separate.
Sure.
From each other. And that, I would definitely be up for a discussion on, you know, what would be the next symbol, logo, whatever you want to call it.
Sure.
On that. But just making sure there are quite a number of other schools in the area with the first initial of F. And making sure that we are able to.
Distinguish.
Distinguish, thank you for, distinguish.
Sure.
Foxborough from that, what I think is very important if we're looking forward to making any changes.
I appreciate that. Thank you. One of the distinctions that the flow chart tries to make, and again, it's just a guide for discussion. It is not the discussion, is that I believe, under each of the blue boxes, there's something that delineates whose job it is. And hearing you, Ms. Raymond, and talking to other committee members one-on-one and just about this issue over the last number of years, when it comes to if a change were made and what might be next, it seemed wholly that the, the will of the committee was that other people should be involved in that and not just this group of five.
Absolutely.
Understanding, of course, that whatever would come forward would have to be approved by this committee for the same reasons why the mascot and the symbol therein is, is wholly much within our purview. So, there's that.
If we make that decision, I would just like to add on to what you said, you were saying is, I would very much want to see students and the art department in the high school to be part of that discussion. Because I think that if you're going to come up with a new logo, a new symbol, then students should be involved in that. And we have the talent that's there, graphic artists and so forth. So, if you're, if we're, if we make that change, that's what I would like to see have happened, as being part of that grouping.
So, I want to just make sure that we're following the initial guideline, which was let's not jump ahead to the later blue boxes. Let's focus on the earlier blue boxes, which is, do we need to open this up for discussion or not? Because I think that we'll get to those other things. What we need to decide is, is something that we're going to spend further discussion on.
And that, well, you know what? In that vein, in, in understanding that, I mean, I'm in this role comfortable moving back and forth, but this is here for a guide because in terms of decisions and action items, we do need to kind of keep it ordered. Let's start with that. You've heard my reasons as to why this is coming up now. Some of you have supplied me those reasons and for that, I'm grateful. Is this something that we want to take up now? And if, if that's the case, then we'll move on.
My question, my response to that is, why not?
I agree. I think it's, it's, it is time for us to do something, to make a decision on, on what we do.
Right.
Delaying doesn't do anything. It is time to make a decision around what our policy and what, what Foxborough is going to do.
And if it's to keep, then it's definitively.
Correct.
To, as a body that represents this community and they're in the schools, to say, yeah, no, keeping it. And here's why. And if we're going to not, then okay. I, I understand that. Any other comments on that?
I'm a total yes on, on now. It's, the, the, no, no need to wait. We have bills across the country. We have a bill here in the state, in, in, in our own state government, in the state. There's 23 logos in Massachusetts, 46 in New England, right? That's it. And they're changing year after year after year. So, we are, we are there. I, I think we're there. That's who we are as a community and society and that's what we talk about. So, I think we're there.
Well, and to a person, I don't know anybody on this committee who had joined the committee to do nothing. So, you know, get busy working, regardless of what that result is, right? So, I, I, I respect you all for saying that. So, assuming the yes, by consensus, we are going to take up the issue. Then we move on to the next question. It's the change or change something.
Well, so, this is where, and I'm sorry.
No.
We had said this was information only tonight.
Right.
If we are making a decision to open up this discussion, is that an action required that we have to?
We don't need to vote on it, yeah.
Okay, that's cool. I just want to make sure that we're all.
Nope. The only things on here that would necessitate, sorry, Mike. The only things on here that would necessitate a vote is not our decision to discuss something or not discuss something. It's if we're actually going to change something that is.
Okay. Thank you.
Our, our, you know, in, in, in our not discussing it or affirmatively deciding to do nothing, like, would change no things. So, yeah, that's the way I see that. But I, 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 we do have to be attentive to that. So, I appreciate that, Mr. Cantfield.
Thank you.
So, then with that, I would invite the committee to look forward at this. Consider your own positions. Ask your own questions of each other. Ask your own questions of administration, if they're able to help. If it, if it is an internal question, understanding that most of those are further, way further down the line on this chain. And beyond that, I guess, if there's other comments right now or questions right now, I think, you know, we're here together so infrequently. If there's things that people want to say or ask, obviously, we can send the messages around as we do, adhering, obviously, as we always do to open public meeting law, to not discuss things outside of this meeting. But sharing information is of course, okay. But if there are things that people want to ask of each other, say, say, say to each other, I think now is a good opportunity.
The one thing that strikes me with this is, as we're coming up with our own individual positions and we're thinking about the community, we need to remember that Warriors is not just associated with the sports teams.
Thank you.
Any team, any group associated with Foxborough Public Schools may adopt Warriors as their name. If they don't have a uniform that says it, they still may have some other association with that name. So, it is more than just the sports community that is impacted by this decision.
Of course.
And I think that's really, I just want to reiterate that because we started out talking about sports, which it makes the most sense because that's what we associate with. But it is the entire district that is associated with the Warrior name, with whatever imagery that is associated with that.
As are, as are our youth sports teams, which are not.
Correct.
Directly affiliated with our schools and are governed by other things. But, I mean, that's why it does land in our.
Right.
In, 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 in our laps in that it is a, it is, it is a school-driven thing, if not controlled across the community. And I appreciate that distinction, Mr. Cantfield.
So, I, I certainly would hope that we will bring this up again in our next meeting as a topic. I mean, I don't know, we don't have to do that, but if we're going to agree to discuss it and move it forward and we're all in agreement that we're in a place of discussion and action, then I think we have to make sure we have it on the next agenda.
I agree.
It doesn't, don't let it slide, right?
Okay.
Yeah, and I.
Let's do it.
And I'll just say publicly and amongst the five of us here, I'm 100% behind the name Warrior.
Okay.
I grew up with it my entire life. I think the name is valid. I think across the country, the Warrior name means a lot of different things to a lot of people. I think across the country, schools that have, might have changed their, their, the imagery.
Yep.
Of their school system has kept the Warrior name, probably almost to 100% across the country. But I think many have. I think many have kept it. Maybe not 100%.
It is not 100%.
Probably not, probably not. True, fair, true. So, but I think it's very high. But I, I think that name can, can carry through. But I think our discussion, my thoughts on this is that, you know, do we have, do, do we, do I, do I believe in a single image and the decision, decision of a single image to identify or overly, overly look like a race? And, and I, I think that's problematic for me, where I sit. And so, you know, to just pick one image to, to, to pigeonhole or narrow, narrow the belief of a race is, is, is too, is too narrow for me. By a long shot. So, I, but I believe in the name very much, though.
So, if, if we're going to put this on the agenda for the next meeting, is that then become a decision point where we make a decision on option of changing the name, changing the imagery or changing both? Is that our goal for the next meeting, is to, to make that a decision at that meeting?
I would be comfortable putting it out there for that. And then, if it's the will of the committee to table or table until X, Y, and Z information has been provided, then okay. But if, if the majority of the committee is comfortable and wants to move forward, that's what will be done.
Okay. Thank you.
To support what you had said, Mr. Pearson, I think, and forgive me for not having the citation on, on my mind right now, I believe the term Warrior comes from something like 15th century French. And, yeah, like, I mean, honestly, it's, it's not.
Yes.
For as much historical association as we have in many parts of the United States of it being attached to indigenous peoples, that's not its origin or its global usage. So, which is interesting to note.
Its interpretation, though, has become much more associated with Native American indigenous people. So, while that is ultimately, that is.
Oh, from a history standpoint.
Objectively true.
Yeah.
Correct.
I get it. Yeah.
Most of the representations that you see in North America for Warrior have something to do with Native American or indigenous peoples.
That is also true.
And we need to consider the history of the name and what that does from a cultural bias standpoint.
Understood.
So.
No, I, I, I appreciate the point and, and accept it. Are there other comments, questions, concerns, or since we are talking about future agendas, a wish list, if it were, for members of the committee? Understanding, of course, that we don't have to get it all out here now, that we, I mean, obviously, any communication we have is subject to Free Movement Information Act. And we, we share this stuff all the time with anybody who wants it. But anything else left to say right now before we move on? Okay. Well, with that, I thank you for your attention and for your, your, your patience as we, we, we lay this out in a, in a manner that I hope is both straightforward, clear, ordered, and provides people ample time to think and, and share our views.
I just, and I want to thank you for, or whoever helped you put this framework together. I think it's useful because we could have been all over the place. So, thank you for taking the time with whoever you worked with, even if it was just yourself, for, for doing that to give us a frame. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Can I just ask, please proceed your question about this?
Of course.
If we put this on agenda item for discussion, could, can we, can we make a decision at that meeting if, if it leads us there?
Yes.
Or is that?
The AR action required and IO are guidelines for the committee.
That's what I thought.
It's, and when we adopted that, I want to say, what, two or three years ago at our July meeting, it was more meant as a guide for both ourselves and the public.
Great.
To just what they might expect. But because this is a live exercise. If the committee decides to take up something that is on the agenda, has to be on the agenda, then we can move forward as we see fit.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I, I didn't say it with any plan.
No.
As much as just.
Clarification.
Just open, public statement that, so nothing, nothing's contrived, nothing's misconstrued by anyone. You know, there's just, the options are there. So, that, that's all it was about. So, it's not preconceived notion on my part at all.
And please.
I, I have a question on, is there anyone, any group within the Foxborough community that we as a committee want to hear from before we would make a decision on this?
Good point.
Rather than leaving it up to them to come to us, is there some?
The inquiries that have been currently made are, I did ask the Foxborough Historical Society if there's any information that they want to share beyond, not, not beyond, regarding specifically the use of Warriors as mascot slash name and the likeness of an indigenous man as the symbol that's currently used or, or the associated feathers that go with that, the other symbol which people have become familiar with. And that is something that they're compiling.
Right.
Other than that, I have not made any further inquiries. But if there are suggestions that people have, that's something we can, of course, do, understanding that they might not come. But we can obviously invite comment, both written or in person.
My preference would be, because we might make the mistake of not identifying somebody correctly, but we've, if, we certainly need to invite people if they're interested in the discussion, either to submit comments to the public inbox, come and join the meeting. We'll have a controlled, open meeting session. But we run a risk if, of missing somebody if we try to reach out.
Oh, if we try to come up with an invite list.
Correct.
Okay, agreed.
That's fair.
Do we want to hear from students?
Want to hear from anybody.
If they, if. If they, if they're welcome.
Sorry, that's my preference.
Yes, I mean, if there's a group of students that feels strongly and want to come speak like they've done at other times, then they should come and speak. But we can't, I would strongly recommend that we not hand-select students or invite a group to come and speak. They need to be proactive and wish to be represented instead of, and we also need to identify that they are speaking for themselves as individual community members, not on behalf of the student body.
Understood. Well, and similar to that, I think it's useful, should anybody be watching this deep into the meeting, that we remind folks that the open public comment feature through Foxborough Public Schools website, those things are part of the public record. Those things do come to all committee members well ahead of the meeting. And anybody who does choose to come and present, that's also part of the public record. Although, if you do come and talk to us, it's not, here, it's not an open discussion. It's just that. It's open public comment.
Right.
Yes, Ms. Ladani?
So just, oh, go ahead, too.
Oh, no. I was just wondering, to Rob and Michelle's point, is it worth casting a net and putting it out there through the schools, I mean, Dr. Bartos' correspondence or through the principals, putting it out there to the families, you know, and the people within our community at large? Like, I don't know. I'm asking a question. It just, you brought up a good point. Rob brought up a good point. Like, should we put it out there?
I suspect the reporter will take care of part of that.
Okay.
Right. But that's just my own supposition.
So I think my point to that is, I think we should talk about it at next meeting.
Okay.
Not sure if we should make a decision, right, necessarily at that point.
Fine.
Because it is something that's tied with the community. I want to give people enough time to be able to, if they have comments that we need to, that we should consider, that we give enough time for people to be able to do that.
Respecting that and respecting that we are, that our opinions may evolve as we hear things, then what I would say is that I would put that out as a question first about, do we want to make a decision? Or anybody here can make a motion to move it or table it. And that's fine. And I would entertain either because I think it'd be unfair not to.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Well, I thank you all for the thought and care that you're exhibiting with this. I mean, you do in all things, but I'm grateful. So thank you, since this is, at least for us, uncharted watch.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll move on to other matters. And because I'm a creature of habit, Ms. Ladani?
Always, it's always Ms. Ladani first. Well, I do have some other matters. At the Parks and Rec booth registration is half full for their summer program. So that's.
Already half?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Half full, and the.
It's awesome.
The applications just closed for staff for the summer.
Cool.
So I think things are looking really good for another really successful summer. Ties and tiaras event is going to be on April 28th. So that's a wonderful, something to look forward to. Touch a Truck will be May 13th. The fishing derby will be June 11th. So we have some really fun spring and summer events coming up. And as always, I'm extremely proud of our NHS and community warriors for continuously stepping up to help at these events and help run them. It's really a source of pride for me to get to see this in the front lines and just watch them continuously show up and lend a hand and help us run these programs. So, yeah, we got some great kids and great events, and that's it.
And a segue for community warriors, right?
Oh, that's right. Community warriors. There's another group. It's not a sports group, volunteer-based group, community warriors.
Well done. Yeah, well done. Ms. Cantfield.
Yes, the only thing, as we are watching our teaching and learning highlight tonight, and this is probably more of an exercise for Foxborough cable, I think it would be a wonderful resource at the end of the school year, at some point, to create a highlight tape of the teaching and learning highlights every meeting. They, they're always different, but there's always something really remarkable.
Well, I love that idea.
If we could just take, if that's what nobody else, if you don't watch anything else about a school committee, on our school committee meetings.
That's fine.
But if you just watch the teaching and learning highlights, you will know how incredibly lucky we are to be in this community. So I don't know how we make that happen, but I, and I'd be the only one that watches it with my tissues, but as these guys were talking, like, we should just take these, put them together as a highlight reel.
That's great.
So, sorry, Mike.
Nice pass.
Great idea.
Ms. Pearson.
I just want, I wanted to make a comment. I went to the games, the basketball games on Friday, our boys and girls. Our boys happened to lose, but the girls won. But what I really, I travel the state a lot to see a lot of games, and this is a busy tournament time for me in running ice hockey and basketball across the state. I do football in the fall. But when I was at the games, I went to two back-to-back games, and what I saw from students and the fans was outstanding. And it should be commended because we are working hard to change the climate and culture of athletics across the state of Massachusetts. It's very difficult. There's a lot of unreasonable, absurd people out there, and it's part of high school sports, and it should not be. But what I saw on Friday was not that. So I saw a group of our students in a whiteout, and there was a ton of students there. And I watched it, and I was there for both games. Every single cheer had, it might have been funny at times, but it was, none of it was degrading or demonstrative or aggressive toward anyone or any individuals. And then I saw the Norwood team come, and they came all in green. So we had the whites and the greens. That's what we had there. And they were doing the same exact thing. And then we go to, and the fans were great at that game as well, too. And you hear a few small calls here and there, but in general, I think the fans are great, and I was listening. And in the smaller games, you can hear it. Then we go to the second game, and the same thing happened. So I just want to commend everyone in this community, and we need to change it from within. The community needs to change it. We can be one community ahead of other communities. So I guess that's what we need to do. But our kids will follow what we do. The kids can lead us and change things for us well, too. So it was just two great games I was at. I went to the basketball game for 20 minutes before this, and the same thing happened. We saw some great athleticism. So I just wanted to just shout it out because we get, every one of our communities needs to do that across the state to bring about a change to this. It's so critically important. The game is for the kids. It's about the kids. It's about the students on the court. It's not about a whole bunch of other people yelling absurdity. So we got to change it. So thank you, Foxborough, for being a great, a great place to host and to celebrate athleticism.
That's great.
So, thanks.
Ms. Raymond.
I really don't have anything to add at this point.
Dr. Burrows.
I'm just glad, Sarah, you mentioned the National Honor Society. Like, for instance, tomorrow night, when Dr. Larry Epstein is there at the Borough, they're going to be there providing childcare. So it's a great plug there. So thank you for that reminder.
It is. Dr. Burrows.
This week is National School Social Workers Week.
It is.
I'm not sure if anybody was aware, but just to give a shout-out to our social workers, we're very fortunate to have many on our staff, and they provide a critical service for our kids. So, thank you.
Ms. Yukna.
Just a quick update. Dr. Burrows, who sits on the CIP committee, we presented the school needs, obviously the limitation of funds in the town. I think there was a good negotiation between the different groups, and in the end, while we didn't get everything we had asked for, the cuts that were put forward would be basically just to reduce the amount of copiers that we buy and the amount of music equipment this year.
Okay.
But pushing that off to either a fall meeting or the spring to buy the other half. So we split it in half. It's been a three-year program already, and so it just will be either three and a half or four years.
So it doesn't go away.
Right. I think it's reasonable. We've taken care of the major components of the music instruments that needed to be, and we'll still get the biggest of the items that we need to get this year with the 25,000. So I thought it was a good trade-off.
Well, I've long supported the process that is used for CIP, and I am appreciative with the town-wide view that folks take in having those discussions because I just, I'm delighted to live in a place where departments have those relationships, and they trust each other, and they know if it's not your year on this, then we can work something out in a future meeting, as you say, Mr. Yukna. So thank you so much for all of your involvement with that. For my part, I want to say that, again, it's a music plug. We were talking about essentially Ellington earlier. String Fest was amazing. I always loved that. When you get the middle schoolers all the way through the high schools, and the teachers are able to talk about the curriculum development through the years, and then you actually go and you hear it, that's amazing. It's rare to be able to do that in academics, and I think it's just really special. Induction into Spanish National Honor Society was tonight. I'm impressed that we have a Spanish National Honor Society, not a little school support that in the other areas, and I know we do in other departments as well. So I'm grateful for the faculty and department chair and all the students' efforts with that. And with that, I'll say thank you. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right. We stand in adjournment until the 21st of March.